We're going to call this regular meeting of the Kingsville City Commission to order. It's Monday, July 27, 2013, at 6:00 PM. All five commission members are present. We open our meetings with a prayer and pledge allegiance to the League. If you care to join us, please stand. Mark the board leaders.
While we're talking for your business students, we ask that you lean down and direct yourself in doing the business of the city. And Jesus, I'm praying. Amen.
My late ladies and students, to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Under Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Next order of business is to approve the minutes of the last meeting. So, Mayor.
Second.
Let's make our prayers effective to approve the previous minutes. Second, by Commissioner Lubert. Roll call vote.
Commissioner Garcia.
Yes.
Commissioner Lubert.
Yes.
Commissioner Beckles.
Yes.
Commissioner Pena.
Yes.
Mayor Peck.
Yes.
I rescind my vote.
Yeah, he's abstaining.
Abstaining.
All right, let's go to the public hearings. We've got four public hearings. It's 6:02. The first public hearing is regarding condemnation proceedings for structures located at 528 South 18th Street here in Kingsville. And Robert.
Excuse us. Thank you. Excuse me, Your Honor.
We'll have an opportunity, ma'am, for you to address any of the issues you want at public comments. We're not there yet, okay?
Well, you brought it up.
Did you hear what I said?
Yes, sir.
Okay, you see, just, we're gonna give you an opportunity. Robert, go ahead.
This is a public hearing regarding the 528, so South 18th. And this is a house that's unsecured. It has no roof, numerous broken windows, building is not secured. The only thing securing it is curtains, windows, blinds, really, that are the only thing on it right now. We went through all the process. Last year, we sent out a notice violation. This year, we are trying to begin the condemnation.
Okay. Any questions or comments? Okay, this is a public hearing, so if you want to speak about this particular issue, all you have to do is come up and tell us who you are and where you live, and you have five minutes to talk about this particular subject.
They informed me to give you a package for you.
Can you tell us who you are and where you live?
My name is Juan Dees. I'm the owner, and my family lives there.
Address?
526 18th. That's the mailing address.
You said y'all live in this house?
Yes, we're repairing.
You're living in this house right now?
That's our homestead.
Would you like to put me in? You say you live at 526.
Yes, that's the mailing address.
But I'm looking at this house, it doesn't have a roof on it.
Yes, sir, I'm gonna go through the recent.
You have five minutes.
Okay.
You better get started. All right.
Basically, my family and I have come in strong disagreement to the condemnation of our homestead. My general attorney, Ross Matthews, and my local attorney committee, Downing, were going that it'll possibly be rescheduled for a hearing, so they could represent me in this hearing. Also to request information on appealing procedures that would ensure my family's right in the decision made in this hearing. But before I do that, I would like to permit me to inform the committee of certain situations that are, or pertinent legal matters. As this gentleman referred to, he sent notices. Those notices, I was informed by my postman, that they were sent to a different person named Juan Rios. My name is Juan Rios, fourth, first. Second of all, in that package, you have certified letter from a letter that was sent to me in April by the building inspector, and I informed them there what is, what the procedure has been doing for, what had electrical, that just did the updating of electrical wiring. Second of all, the re-roofing, that's why there's no roof. It's down to, as you can see in the pictures, they're down to the rafters. The other thing that's very pertinent, that's on May 28, the power was scheduled to be turned on, and the reason was that no inspection had been made on turning on the power after all the electric had been done. The situation on the repairs, as is enumerated right there, this is for the information that the commission. In 1903, the windows, as I stated there, five new windows. And there's pictures in there, too. Replaced all the exterior doors, the house was insulated. We repaired the siding, it was done, and I have the documentation. In '02, again, like I said, the electric outdid, but Santana Electric, it's all new. And the relaying of the roof is fast, waiting for the power to be turned on. It has never been done. And I do have a plan as to the additional future plans, which is in two phases, that I am implementing, because I did talk to Mr. Rodriguez, and he stated that he was more concerned of stuff that was inside the house. So I also did consult an engineer on the condition of the property, and two general contractors. And I have a general contractor right here with me, and they can testify to the condition of the house, which is totally made well within 60 days as far as the roof and the outside. This is a total remodel now, because I was challenged by Mr. Ramirez to the insides, obviously, to the rafters with the rain, it did damage to the chair rock, or the chair rock now I have to replace, so I got all the chair rock, and it's ready to be replaced. I did show the documentation of the certified letter. So to the commission, it says that they gave me notice, they did not give me notice. And that within 10 days, I do have certified, given information to them as far as that is concerned. And this letter states, the letter is this that I sent certified, which says, "This is a letter in response to your letter addressing the repairs needed to our home. My family and I would like to respectfully inform you that we intend taking and have already taken action to repair our home, and has made a reasonable progress in completing our home repairs considering our family situation. It is also important to point out that this is our home, and there is nothing more than my family and I would want than to complete the repairs and live in our home. Either due to a circumstance beyond our control, my wife and I, or the primary caregivers of our five children, and with, have special needs and have disabilities, we have under, we are in a fixed income and funds, or may, even though we want, and make the initial improvements are very limited." Also, the above is being said, not as an excuse, as I explained, it's only to explain the situation to accommodate the needs. And then I put the plan of it, action, I put the re-roofing permit, I put the electrical permit, I put the special collections where we have done work. So as of April is the first time legally I have gotten notice that the city had any problem with my home. And I responded within 10 days, and you have.
Mr. Rios. I'm sorry, but, really, when you heard the beep, that's five minutes.
Right.
So you got, we have all the information in front of us that you're going over, so we'll take that into consideration.
And again, the legal matter as far as a rescheduling, so that we can have it, and also any legal.
We'll take, this is just a public hearing. We'll have an opportunity to talk about this later on in the agenda about what we're gonna do. I will say this, we got four condemnations today, and I drove by and looked at all four of them. Your house has to be the work. So I'm sorry, but I, we'll address the issues that you raised when we open up the hearing, okay?
Right. And like I said, just for the record, all the information packages, it's available to be publicly noted as far as all the notices.
Okay.
And when he stated that he'd send me notice last year, that is incorrect. Nobody has sent me no notice last year. April was the first notice that I got, and I responded within the time, so that's a lot.
Thank you. Anybody else want to speak if this is a public hearing? Got this particular house. Okay. I'm gonna go ahead and close this public hearing. It's at 6:10, and we'll go on to the next hearing. And I'm opening this hearing at 6:10. It's a hearing regarding condemnation proceedings for structures located at 1221 East Weasack Avenue, Kingsville. Robert, give us briefly.
Pretty brief. This is the same situation we sent the notices last June, June 2012. The house is in disrepair, out of the showroom.
Good question. All right, this is a public hearing. It's an opportunity for anybody that wants to get up and talk about this house, you can come up here, you have five minutes, and that's set by law, not by me, that you have five minutes to talk about this particular house. Anybody else have anything on the commission on this one? Okay. I'm gonna close this public hearing. We'll go to the next. It's 6:12. And now open the next public hearing at 6:12. This is regarding condemnation proceedings for structures located at 422 South 18th Street here in Kingsville.
This is, these are all from June of last year, notices, violations from June of last year. This house is addressed at 420, legally, it's 422.
Any questions from the commission?
Yes, the next one is, why is 410, 820, and 422?
Well, I, the house looks to have an extra apartment to the rear, so it could be, there could, I see 420 on one, it could be that one is 420, the other's 422, and it's not signed. It's one lot with a setback of the house connected to it. That's the only explanation I can give. I believe it's all 422.
And usually, your odds are on one side, green ones are not, or the other side, but either two.
These are both even numbers.
Even numbers, so just go one half or something like that.
I didn't see a one half on there.
Now, this is a public hearing. If anybody wants to come up and speak about this house, you have five minutes to do so. Just come up and tell us who you are and where you live.
It's 18th Street.
Yes, 422, South 18th.
Do you have anything to say? My apologies, but completely in the dark here, unfamiliar with every subject.
Well, you just tell us who you are and where you live, and you got five minutes to talk.
I am Louise Barker. I have power of attorney for the property owner. Legally, the address is 420 and a half, according to the post office. City Hall says 422. Not quite enough. This is a duplex, 420, 422. And there have been all sorts of problems with people in the town as far as vehicles and those, that if you've inspected the property on 420, you notice there's a key stuck in the door knob, because somebody tried to give the lock, or it happened, the key won't come out. I mean, hey, I thought you said it was a good morning. No, I wasn't out partying, and you hear a friend call. Yes. Something needs to be done. Mrs. Johnson does not want to put more money into it, so we need to progress agreeably. And like I said, I knew all this. I have just taken over, and I'm learning. First notice I had was, well, a notice of dishearing.
Where did you tell me you live? So we'll get it on the record.
1602 East Weasack.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am. Anybody else want to speak about this particular house? Okay, I'm gonna close this public hearing at 6:15. We'll go to the next public hearing, and then open it at 6:15. This is a hearing regarding condemnation proceedings for structure located at 702 East 4-12.
This was also part of the June condemnation, notice of violation. This is a concrete foundation, unsecured garage. The, all of these were mailed to the P.O. box that we have.
Any questions? All right, well, you did, y'all did a really good job of packaging this for us. I mean, we have all, we have all the information, really, on all these houses, and the pictures. And, you know, pictures, they speak volumes. Okay, thank you. All right. If you want to talk about this house, all you gotta do is come up here and tell us who you are and where you live, and you can talk about this house in five minutes.
Well, Louise Barker, L-O-U-I-S-E, B-I-R-K-E-R, 1602 East Weasack Avenue. Once again, the garage is secure. The back door needs to be replaced, but you cannot go further than that room without breaking the next back door. Get into the garage. The house needs painting, new garage door. And once again, I'm a newbie. I don't. I'm learning. So we're going to be painting, cut, there's brush that needs to be cut down, so it can be painted. Would you like to? Thank you.
And I'm gonna close, unless anybody has anything on this, if anybody on the commission. I'm gonna close this public hearing at 6:18. We'll go on to reports from commissioning staff.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of things. One, we have a couple of presentations tonight. Bob Trescott's gonna make a presentation on the HEPRAVLA Kennedy House and give the city commission some information it might want to consider. There's no decision expected of the commission, it's just informational. And then I think Johnson Plant is here from, okay, Tom, thank you, to give a, some information, an annual report, actually, on the Connor Museum and its efforts to promote tourism and everything. So appreciate him being here. The commission can take either one, whichever order it flows.
If you don't have any objections, why don't we take this after our consent agenda?
Okay, okay. Just a couple more things, Mayor. One is, the city staff has a professional development course this Thursday, all day. It's a continuing effort to expose our leadership team to concepts and improve city government. And then, one, the city commission should know that budget preparations are underway, and the city staff has given me their budgets, so the ball's kind of in my court. And that's where we are. I guess it will only be a few weeks before we have our first budget workshops, and the commission will be presented with more detailed information by the public director.
Any questions or comments? Anything, recording everything.
Just to let everybody know, because I know a lot of people think we have meetings every other week, actually, it's the second and fourth Monday of the month, and the way the calendar falls, our next regularly scheduled meeting, unless a special meeting ends up being called, will be for three weeks. It'll be on August the 12th. And so staff needs to have their agenda items in by that Friday, I think it's around August the 2nd. And as the city manager mentioned, we'll both be out at the professional development day on this Thursday. That was all.
Anything for the commission? All right. That's go on to public comments on the agenda this afternoon. Everybody to come up and tell us anything they want to talk about, in, on or off the agenda. And I will say this, if it's negative, it's okay, too. If it's positive, that's even better. This is a free microphone, this is a democratic commission and country, and you can say what you want, it's your opportunity. Watch your language, I hope.
Good evening, Mayor Figate and City Commission. My name is Albert Garcia. I reside at 315 South 23rd Street. I'm here to talk or discuss about agenda item number one, to approve the final pass of the ordinance, amended the city ordinance. I granted a special use permit, 1601 South Highway 77, CP. I'm not gonna read all of it. But it's basically to approve Silver Spur Bar and Grill. I'd like to just say that I could commend Mr. Leo Garcia for the business that he has run for the last 10, 15 years that he's been in Kingsville. He's a responsible citizen, and I would like to see his business continue to grow. More so, I'd like to say that it's also a matter of economic development as a real estate broker, working in this community. There's always a need for us to grow local businesses instead of people going outside of the community. And as everybody knows, the Wild Horse Mall, partially to think, it's a great opportunity for Silver Spur Bar and Grill to occupy, you know, possibly even be an anchor tenant in the common retail business. And so maybe we could attract more businesses to come into the Wild Horse Mall, so we wouldn't have all those dollars given to Portis Chris. Something that many people, and I myself, would be interested in doing. So for those two reasons, I'd like to ask the city commission to vote in favor of this. Thank you.
Anybody else? Anybody else? Okay. Let's go on to Leo.
I'm Garcia, 1533 Lewis Street. Again, I just want to talk about the same issue as far as getting relocated. And I had a petition signed by a few hundred people I'm on the leave with you guys, we wanted to go. And I just wanted to thank everybody who came out here to support us again today. My show fans, everybody that's out here for us, to give an idea of what we're carrying up there. Again, thank you very much.
All right. Anybody else?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of city council. My name is Joseph Bedren. That's B as in boy, I E, B as in David, R O N. I reside at 2024 Sherwood Street here in Kingsville. I've been a proud resident here of Kingsville for the past five years, and as our previous two speakers just before me had mentioned, the Wild Horse Mall, this would be a great addition to economic development here in the Kingsville area. At my age, I'm not looking at myself as an individual, but I'm looking at people in the Kingsville area that fall in the ages of mid-20s, 30s, 40s, and where do they go? Where do they go here in Kingsville? There isn't. All that business is going to Portis Christie, San Antonio, and other communities. So I speak very much in favor of the Silver Spur relocating to the Wild Horse Mall, and what it can bring in other businesses to what I look at as a pretty mall that has good, stable businesses right now, but many openings left for future tenants. So we all commend you on what you're doing.
Thank you, too.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, I'm gonna close the public comments. We'll go on to our consent agenda, or motion.
Mayor, I make a motion that we accept that consent agenda is presented.
Give a second, okay. There's a motion by Commissioner Beckles to approve the consent agenda, is presented seconded by Commissioner Lubert. Roll call vote.
Commissioner Lubert?
Yes.
Commissioner Beckles?
Yes.
Commissioner Pena?
Yes.
Commissioner Garcia?
Yes.
Mayor Figate?
Yes. Okay. All right. Who do you want to speak first? Come on in.
Hey, Mayor Figate and commissioners, I am Jonathan Plant. I'm the new director of the John Connor Museum here in Kingsville on the Texas A&amp;M Kingsville University Campus. Oh, my residence, I guess, is at 730 Santa Elena Drive. This is my first opportunity to present our annual report. Look on page one, has our expenses for this fiscal year, as well as our projected budget for the next coming fiscal year. There's about a 10,000 difference anticipated of operating expenses next year as opposed to this year due to 20% increase in advertising expense and similar things. On page two, you'll see some of the activities that we've been involved in this year. We've had six different traveling exhibits that we've presented, temporary exhibits in our Pinkerton Valley. Support in the city, Kingsville supports four of our vital positions. Those are the curator who develops and schedules and installs contemporary exhibits, our visitor services staff, which is two personnel who assist and visitors, and our exhibit advocate. We've been involved in some different outreach opportunities this year. We've presented, participated in the Rain Fan Festival downtown in November, and in Creative Lights in December, and we hope to continue to participate in these and more community events. We have funded the community through advertising. We've installed two new billboards on Texas 77, one just outside of Robstown headed south, one on Carlos Strawn headed north, and we're looking at continuing the billboards the next year and evaluating how well that can turn to bringing in more visitors. We've changed our advertising strategy. We have We've changed our advertising strategy. We have dropped some of our national publications and increased advertising regional publications, including Texas Now, Be the Texas, both of which are aimed at visitors from coastal bend. Be the Texas also goes transborder into the Matamoros region in New Mexico. Next year, we plan to continue this regional advertising as well, increase advertising to attract newer Texans. We made some new improvements to the museum. We've got a new thoracic door. We've got several hands-on exhibits, new man fossil exhibit. And within the next fiscal year, we hope to add new sections on Kingsville as well as the university. Other highlights for the year, we hosted the Tahuana Summit. We hosted a tour of museum professionals and affiliation with the Mountain Thank Museum Association Conference in Corpus. They came visiting the museum. We hosted a tour of Helen Claybrook's. It was the first time she toured our museum. We hosted the Coastal Bend Regional History Fair, as we've done for numerous years. We acquired the all-ridge collection of vintage farm equipment from a family in Robstown, three generations through farming in the same home state. There were very places with that. And we were also the first city in the country to debut a national touring exhibit, Step Right Up, the circus exhibit that just closed at the end of May here at the King's Museum. Some company illustrations with some of the photographs of some of these exhibits and projects and things we've done. And we appreciate very much the support we've gotten from the city of Kingsville. And we hope to continue to continue that relationship as we cooperate to benefit Kingsville and tourism in the city. Thank you.
Does anybody have any questions for the commission?
I did. I had a couple of comments.
Yes.
Jonathan, I've gotten to thank you a little bit. I just want to say what a great job you've been doing. I was in Rockport this weekend. I was giving to Texas Now and told them I was from Kingsville. And lady who is a husband and wife team that worked there, and she had nothing but great things to say about you. And I also talked to some people. They're worried about things for their families to do. The Connor Museum is a great example, and your, the circus. I think there was a couple of people that were a little worried about people showing up, and I understand the ones that did had the best time ever.
We had a very good tenant. At the workshop, we had about 60 people and 70 of them performed.
So keep doing the good job. Because it's, you know, I'm hearing from people out in the city of Kingsville about Connor Museum. And I've been here for a long time. It's nice to hear people talking about Connor Museum on the streets.
Thank you.
Any other questions you can ask?
Mayor.
Sure.
Mr. Plant, have you tried to, and I think you mentioned it actually in the comments, attach your efforts to the hotel night stays that you might be attracting to Kingsville?
We have. That's why we changed our focus and our advertising a little bit, because we weren't getting, we weren't getting visitors from the national publications. We're having much greater success with the regional tourism publication, with publications that are specifically aimed at people that are traveling as opposed to sit at home, armchair enthusiasts. And our billboards, we're hoping to get some good results from our billboards.
One of the things, Commissioner, that we're going to try to do is all of our activities, I mean, obviously the hotels collect this tax. They want it spent in a way that benefits them. That's the purpose that is established. And I think we want to make sure that we're optimizing that. And we have had a long, I think, favorable relationship with Connor Museum. We want to make sure that it's contributing in a way that the tax was originally established for. And so we'll appreciate your assistance then.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, thank you. You have one other presentation? Bob?
I don't know what order you want to do this, and we have a short video presentation that we can share if you're, if you're choice. Bob, can you give a little background information before we show that? I've included information on the Petrovella Kennedy House in the last three or four staff reports. I have to admit to y'all, this isn't something we actually initiated. This is one of those opportunities that comes along. We learned of the possibility of relocation of the Kennedy House through people we were working with on the canopy or the pavilion across the street. And I think the mayor actually learned of it separately. I'll be honest with you, our first reaction was, what a wonderful house, and we thought it probably should be somewhere else. And that was our first reaction. And I think the mayor made calls, and I made calls, to see whether this house should be in Kennedy County or some other location. But then I found out that I didn't know my history. This house was actually built in about the late 1860s in what is now Claybrook County. And the Kennedys lived in Claybrook County for 10 years, or what became Claybrook County, 10 years of land that's now the King Ranch. Turns out that Mrs. Kennedy never actually spent the night in Kennedy County at the Kennedy Ranch. I didn't know that. I didn't actually assume that they lived down there. So this house actually has very strong connections to our community. And as I said, Sarah, our first reaction was to say, what a wonderful house. Someone should preserve it. We looked around and we thought, well, if we did, if that house did end up here, how would we use it? And as you know, there's plans for doing more with the downtown park, beginning with the Zero Escape Park, and now with the pavilion that we got from ATB, and the Pump House and other things, really trying to take the downtown property between Fifth and Sixth Street and along the railroad and having it become a city downtown park. We don't have a plaza like a lot of cities would have. And so it's really starting to be used for some of our festivals and events as the place to have downtown events. So we thought, well, if we had a house, it could be a place that would support using the rest of the park, plus the historical significance of the house itself. So that was just a thought. And then out of the blue, the foundation that controls the house offered it to the city with money to accomplish the move. So all of a sudden, it took our interest in it as a historic house and raised it to a level of maybe we can really do something with this, and it certainly has the historical appropriateness. So this thing has kind of acquired a light of its own. Just a couple of days ago, and I think you've gotten copies of the letter from the foundation that controls the house, offering the city the, and it actually came too late to even put on the agenda for this. That's why I'm speaking on the report section. It came too late to put on this meeting. But they're now offering us the house with a sum of $75,000 to accomplish the move. So to me, and with our office that deals with tourism and historic preservation and heritage tourism and downtown, we think it's quite an opportunity, but we thought we'd better bring you all up to date. You know, there's always information and misinformation that floats around. So the purpose of tonight was to bring you up to date on what we know about it and just share with you so you all can make a decision when it comes up to being a decision.
What's your video look like?
That sounds like a, it sounds like a.
Think I had any questions? Okay. Thanks, Bob. Any, okay, let's go on to the next item, our regular agenda, I guess. First item is considered condemnation of structures located at 528 South 18th Street in Kingsville. You know, this was the worst of the bunch.
If you didn't get noticed, though, it wouldn't hurt to reset it for another month.
Well, you misspelled the name. You misspelled the name, and so, you know, maybe this does, since council, councilwoman is. Maybe we're obviously, unless somebody has an objection.
I don't have an objection, but I'd like to trip into something that I was looking on here on the rebrick permit. This form was issued 7/3/2012. It expired 12/30/2012. The electric remodel permit was issued 7/30/2012. And it expired January 26, 2013. That's what I've got in my mind, so.
There's a lot of work. I can't, we didn't have a roof on it.
But I mean, you got a permit here, and you still have no roof, and you're still looking at electricity, so.
Commissioner, we do have the building inspector here tonight, if you'd like him to comment. He's probably more familiar with it.
Well, I would say this falls on the owner. They got the permit, and it would be their responsibility to do the work. And there's no roof.
Hold up, Daniel.
Daniel, would you, Daniel, would you come to the microphone?
I'm sorry.
Thanks, Bob.
Thanks, Daniel.
Normally, on any contractor, councilwoman gets a permit for upgrading a meter service. We do that immediately. We run, we don't walk. So that was inspected. Some way or another, we would have to have our record and was inspected. Now, if they didn't do any more to the house, you know, we don't have no control over that. But I notice that service still just brand new like it was a year ago.
Okay.
Yeah, I think that's my point, Daniel, is you got a permit here, you did your due diligence.
I believe it's on July 11, but I don't know, all these contractors here have been working within five years, two months, exactly. And when they, like I said, when they get a permit, we run, for electrical, gas, or whatever it is. We inspect it that same day, as soon as they call that it's ready. So I know it's been inspected.
Okay. Well. Yeah, it's one of those cases where.
Courtney's point as well is a good.
Oh, yeah, that's what we're going to do, you know.
We can put it off.
We should, get it noticed, right?
It's going to be one of those deals where you can put this off three, four, five months, six months, a year, two years, and the neighbor, you're still going to have to deal with this house. And quite frankly, it sticks out, and it's really a bad shame. I mean, there's one picture where you can see the shadow of the sun inside it. I mean, there's no roof at all. So. I don't, Courtney, how?
If we give them the 30 days, they, y'all are, y'all are, again, we're doing our due diligence, whether they're doing anything or not. They have to do something. They got 30 days to do something and not just sit on it. And this is my old neighborhood, and those houses used to be really nice dude houses. And they have looked like this for years, and it's an embarrassment. You don't even want to go down that street.
And it's right there next to Harvey School, too, which is another issue that I have. It's right there.
Unsecured.
Oh, yeah. Hold it there. I'm sorry.
Normally, when you, when you rewire a home, and then when inspection is passed, normally the roof is weathered in, I mean, the house is weathered in, you would think, you would think.
Now, at the time, I mean, like Mr. Rios was saying, he said he was doing something to it. So it might have been in 2012, it might have been connected and had a roof. Because I don't know what happened between 2012 and then, but that would make sense to me that if we went out there.
I think the roof was on it.
I think the roof was on it, too.
It just wouldn't have changed.
And when the building official saw it connected, it was there.
Okay. All right, well, let's go ahead and we'll reschedule this for sometime in August or September. Okay, Mr. Rios, you get a reprieve because of it's very name right.
Mayor, just in all fairness, I know Mr. Rios very well, and I know his family. The agenda in New York will take care of this and it will be, of the small.
My children, I think I've got a picture on there. I do have a contractor, I've got two general contractors, promise the, I personally will do the work, but it's under the circumstances, Osborne Construction has taken it on. Within a week or so, he can put the roof. The siding can be, as we do have a plan in the package that clearly states what needs to be done. I do, I mean, please, the inspection number, like I said, it has a tag. You know, my fault, again, I'm not an expert on, you know, when I did, when I got here, there was only one inspector. When they're saying, we'll get to it, we'll get to it now.
Sir, I think our point is, we hear all this stuff, and we hear it from people constantly. We need action. You need to make it. You need to be a good neighbor. You need to fix the house to where you guys can live in it comfortably and safely, and just get it done.
Yes. I mean, by the next week hearing, I mean, if we permit it to do the roof and the siding, I'm sure it's going to be a big difference. Right now, we need to move on it. I mean, we've, we got the house inside. I mean, preparing it for everything in like 10 days. So, you know, we have an expert on putting the floor in and whatever he does, that he can do it quite quickly. She already talked to Mr. Ramirez. I think she already informed him of what needs to be done. I'm sorry, I just don't communicate. You know, I don't know the language. You know, I'm not a contractor per se. I have work knowledge. I've done the roof before. So I can do the roof. I know how to do it. I just don't know the ins and outs of inspections and permits and what or not. You know, I yield to, you know, a general contractor that has more experience than that. By the time, if you're saying August or September, by that time, the house is done. You know, that's all I'm saying.
Can I work with Mr. Ramirez?
Yes, yes. As a matter of fact, I'm staying out of it. Mr. Osborne, Jack Osborne is the general contractor. If we can get the permit, as a matter of fact, we were on hold, and we couldn't do anything until we got to this hearing.
Okay.
So if we get permission to continue the work that we need to do, we more than will continue to do so.
Okay, thank you. Mayor, question, does he have a current permit?
Does he have a current permit? No, that's what I was going to comment. Come on in and we can talk about permits tomorrow. I'd love to talk to you guys tomorrow.
I'll be in touch with Mr. Ramirez.
Okay. So Mr. Ramirez is in the front of the room, and I'll come downstairs and we'll talk.
Thank you so much.
All right. Next item is considered condemnation of structures located at 1221 East 3rd Street in Kingsville. Yes. Did we get anybody that got up and complained about this one? Okay. Who's going to do it?
I make a motion that if I'm not able to repair the building or structure that is unsafe in present conditions, it violates a ordinance and cannot be corrected in the course of financial reconstruction, then declare the building or structure to be a public nuisance and order its demolition by owner, agent personally in charge within 30 days. City shall obey in any manner it deems necessary a problem.
Second.
Any question made by Commissioner Pickles to condemn this structure seconded by Commissioner Lubert? Any other discussion? Roll call vote?
Commissioner Pena?
Yes.
Commissioner Garcia?
Yes.
Commissioner Lubert?
Yes.
Commissioner Pickles?
Yes.
Mayor Pugay?
Yes. Okay, the next item is considered condemnation of structure located at 422 South 18th Street in Kingsville. What struck me about the comments that were made that's very disconcerting is that that the owner's not going to put any more money into this structure. And I think that, that makes, that makes harm, because it had, you got to, you got to put money in it to get it back where it needs to be. And so I, I mean, is that correct?
Is that what she said?
Yeah, she said she, that's correct. Y'all don't want to put any more money into this house, do you?
It has been one constant headache for the past 20 years, people breaking in. Just.
Something else is now.
There's a space on 420 and a half where somebody actually stole the siding of the house. And that's not the first time it's happened.
I'm not trying to be disrespectful, ma'am, but I'm just trying to, I just remember your, your response was that y'all are not going to put any more money into this house. Is that correct?
We feel that we would be better to have it taken down. We feel that we would be better to have it taken down, and then in the future rebuild.
All right, well, stand, stand back.
Yes, sir, I'm standing.
I make a motion, finding unable to repair. Building or structure is unsafe in present condition is a violation of ordinance and cannot be corrected with cause of financial reconstruction. Then declare the building or structure to be a public nuisance and order its demolition by owner, agent personally in charge within thirty days. City shall obey in any manner it deems necessary and proper.
Second.
A motion made by Commissioner Pecos to condemn this structure, seconded by Commissioner Luber. Any other discussion?
Yes.
To identify the property.
It's four, is it four twenty-two or four twenty?
According to the tax rules, it's four twenty-two, according to the tax rules.
Tax rules, Anna Pris.
They can wait at Loopless.
All right. I'm sorry, ma'am, you're, yeah. Any other discussion among the commission? Roll call vote.
Commissioner Garcia?
Yes.
Commissioner Luber?
Yes.
Commissioner Peckles?
Yes.
Commissioner Panha?
Yes.
Mayor Puguet?
Yes. Next item is Consider Condemnation of Structure Located at 1708 East Fordice here in Kingsville.
Now, this one, you know, I, we did agree about the security of the garage. Granted, the garage door is closed, all I meant to say was, there's a broken window on one of the, of one of the garage doors. And I was just saying that that might be a way for, you know, varmints and stuff to get in, but that's what I meant by that.
Kind of shapes the roof, though, that spot.
It's a decent shape, it's got all of the chingles on it, we actually had a discussion asking whether or not it was, when was it roofed? It's old, but I'm not saying it's, it's torn off or anything like that.
This is the best of the four.
Yes, it's got a brick parapet wall at the bottom, and then.
But it looks abandoned.
Yes.
Slab foundation.
Slab foundation.
Okay, yeah. Tell me what you think.
Well, the house is crying because of neglect, and it's three lights set around.
And that's why I'm crying.
I can understand that.
Because we have to do this every meeting, and you come up here and talk to them about taking care of their own property.
Right, I agree. And my poor mother has heard this for twenty years now, from me. But I have just recently taken over, and I'm trying very hard not to walk on her pocketbook, I'm trying very hard not to walk on her feelings. The house has got to have a new garage door. She said she was going to do it three years ago, she's ninety-one. Three years isn't, I mean, tomorrow isn't here yet.
Bob, are you jumping in the house and looking inside of this? Did you get in the house? On the one.
We don't have the pictures on.
Inside. There should be inside pictures on that.
Bathroom, floor, bed.
I thought I had pictures from seven.
You think?
Kitchen is, floors are bad.
No, floors, but that's thirty dollars a box.
Wait a second, that's Eighteenth Street.
And the bathroom floor on Fordice is ceramic tile.
Does anyone do it?
No. No.
Are you gonna get, you're gonna put any money on the inside, or you're gonna, do you wanna clean it up if you can see inside?
Oh, yes. Step by step.
Okay, but that doesn't answer my question, when is step by step? We need a timeline, we need twenty days, thirty days.
Well, thirty days, I'm going to be busy emptying out Eighteenth Street and getting it down.
A what?
Emptying out Eighteenth Street and getting it down. I'm gonna have to get together with this gentleman on that.
Well, I'll tell you what I think, I don't wanna imagine, but your priority's gonna be this house maybe. What do you think, Bob?
Need to have some dialogue with, with the family to find out if they're gonna have a, if they're gonna do it, or if they're gonna clean it up.
How'd you get in the house, Dave?
The back door, sir?
Back door's open.
Wide open, he just had a fifty-five gallon trash can, and the door was open, so we just went inside over all the, all the.
The garage, the garage door, I mean, from that back room to the garage, was locked.
Not when we went over there, Manuel, my other inspector, were with me, so we didn't break no doors, we don't do that.
I know that.
But it was open.
I know you would not do that.
I would say, Commissioner, if I could, estimates are that we have over four hundred houses or structures that need to come down in Kingsville. And most of the houses that come before the city commission have been in disrepair for decades. And there have been plenty of opportunities and chances to fix up these houses. It's only been, because staff has forced the issue that the owners have come forward.
And you, I don't know if you realize this, how much work our staff has to do to bring these houses to us, and they do a great job, but it's, it's hard work on their part, and I like, I like to support them.
I can understand that.
If I could also say that, that these houses come to your attention, not necessarily because the staff has gone out and searched them out, it's because we received a complaint from either a school, or a property owner, or somebody, that's, that's normally how it comes to our attention. So it's not like staff is going out and victimizing people, we've responded to complaints. And there are some, there are some where we go out and we've identified them as being dangerous structures. So, you know, I guess it's important to understand that, that in deciding these issues, we're responding in part, not just to staff's concerns, but concerns of the neighborhood involved in it.
I understand. And, and, you know, this particular house, and the one on we said, both, those are not, those neighborhoods are still pretty nice, real nice, and these, these houses really stick out.
So we can give you another sixty days, or six months, or, is what we're saying, I think.
Okay.
So you need to decide whether you can get it fixed quickly, or not.
It has to be quickly.
I would say that, you know, if you guys was the staff that come out with a plan, and if it's something feasible, and that they can do it, then they'll do it, and if not, then bring it back to us.
Get that timeline.
Let's put both of these houses on our first, first of September.
I'm sorry, it's noisy.
I'm not talking, looking at you about your bag, I'm talking about your house.
Hey, I just took over.
Well, you got till September, if Daniel can work with you, and I'll tell you what, it's up to him whether he wants to or not. Daniel?
I have just one, um, just one comment. We drove by, uh, Mayor's Mission, uh, we drove.
Jennifer, here.
Jennifer, now, Community Parent Supervisor. Uh, we did go by the houses today, and this particular, um, structure has, it's, you can't really see it with the huge overgrown tree.
Yeah, the trees are round together.
Uh-huh, and they have to come down in order for it to be painted, and I do apologize for interrupting.
Yeah, that was just a concern, I know that move of Mr. Sossi, and when we do discuss that with her, that's, that's a part of the issue that was brought up to us, and a complaint that came up, you know, with the being so hot bees were an issue, mosquitoes and all that, that comes with overgrowth and rank vegetation on that.
Okay. Thank you.
Back all of you.
You're welcome. Let's go to the next item, Consider Accepting the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report of the City of Kingsville, fiscal year two thousand and eleven, two thousand and twelve. Luke Howard.
Thank you.
Mayor Commissioners, so my life is recognized to accounting finance office staff members. One is James Bryce, who's our accounting manager, and then Stacy Kenya is also in our office. If I could stand, please, just for a minute. And these are part of the team that puts together the caper for you. Stacy came to us, and she's been here almost a month, and James came about a year ago. And James had eight years' experience with the city of Corpus, and Stacy had some experience and came over, and she's passed a couple of project receivables, and she's, she's in addition to our office staff.
Mayor Commissioners, thank you all for giving me the opportunity to present the audit to you. Um, if you'll turn to pages thirty-eight and thirty-nine, we'll go over the financials of the district, I'm gonna start the district, the city. And first of all, I want to explain, as we've talked about in the past, that there's two sets of financials here. One is the full set of accrual financials, and one is a modified accrual, which is cash basis, basically, and that's the one we're gonna go over. That's on page thirty-eight and thirty-nine. On, you'll see about four or five funds there, you have the general fund, police forfeiture fund, debt service, capital improvements, and then all the special revenue funds are grouped. The general fund has about six point two million dollars. The taxes receivable and various others receivable, about one point two million. We have, we have restricted cash, which is just under three point seven million, and that three point seven million is your landfill closure, free and post closure of reserves that y'all set over the years. For a total assets of thirteen million, four hundred and forty-six thousand dollars. We have liabilities of two hundred, two million, seven hundred and twelve thousand. Last year, those liabilities were three point one, and so the liabilities are down, primarily due to accounts payable. And then the next thing, the next big number down, is the total equity is ten million, seven thirty-four, and last year, that equity was ten million, fourteen. So the city and the general fund is in very good shape. That five point six million is about a million six over what you normally carry as a reserve, three months, so you've got very adequate reserves in the general fund. Police forfeiture fund is still very adequate, it has total assets of five million one, of which three point four million is cash, and it has the equity of one point six eight one million available for future expenditures. The debt service has one million, fifty-seven thousand dollars in assets, including the taxes receivable, and they have a liability of four hundred thousand, leaving them with a seven hundred and thirty-three thousand dollar fund balance, the debt service is, has a substantial fund balance itself. Capital improvements have total assets of three point seven million, last year that was five million, that's decreased to about a million and a half, and that's what you expect, because that's the bond money you borrow and you put there, and you're gonna be spending it down, that's just gonna come down to zero, leaving, at that point in time, three million, sixty-six thousand dollars. So the, the city is in very good financial condition. All your funds are in very good shape, and so if you, then I'll turn to the fund on pages forty-one and forty-two, we'll look at the revenues and expenditures. Total revenue is one million, I mean, fifteen million, one oh six, that far left-hand column in the general fund. Last year, that fifteen million, one ninety, so revenue is still holding strong, pretty consistent. Expenditures were fifteen million, five fifty-two versus fourteen million, they were up about a million due to expenditures that y'all planned and budgeted for capital improvements throughout the city. And then we had, net change in fund balance was actually a positive three million, one five. So even with some pretty aggressive spending, in order to enhance things around the city of Kingsville, you still ended up with about three hundred and fifteen thousand dollar surplus. When you add that to that ten million, four eighteen, that brings you down to the number we just saw a minute ago, which is ten million, seven thirty-four. So the equity in the city is still very strong. The police department forfeiture fund brought in eight hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars. They spent one point five six one million, and therefore, they had a reserve of two million, and that brought that down to a million, six eight one, so they still have a substantial reserve as of the end of the year. Debt service brought in fourteen, a million, four fifty-four, it spent a million, eight oh two, however, we have a transfer in from one of the other capital projects funds of four hundred and twenty-seven thousand, resulting in a positive variance there of seventy-nine thousand dollars to the better. And when you add that to the six hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars that was already existing, that brings you down to a fund balance of seven hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars. Capital improvements, very little money coming in off interest nowadays, so your income is only around twenty thousand dollars of interest if you're in on the bond proceeds. However, we spent one point four million, and there's that million for depletion, and that brings the four point three million equity down to the three million, sixty-six thousand dollars. So revenues remain strong, your reserve, four months of expenditures would be roughly four million, like we talked about a minute ago, so the general fund is in very good financial condition. Police forfeiture fund is still heavily capitalized. Debt service fund, seven hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars is more than adequate to sustain that, and then capital improvements are depleting as you, as you do based on your budget. And so the financial condition of the city is in excellent shape. We did have our audit committee meeting this afternoon, we went over the findings. Primarily, there was one repetitive findings where we were talking about condition of the accounting records. A lot of good work goes on, but it's still, some of the, the assets and liabilities need reconciliation prior to the end of the year. And we had, we talked about the investment policy, hours that need to be attained, that was one of the other findings. And so it was just some general matters, but we had a pretty good discussion, pretty good dialogue, and I think management will continue to address those issues. And so, this is, I don't know how many hours go into this, but it's a lot, I think we've been through almost two months. I got my own parking place and everything.
Well, you go to my office.
I signed a lot of bills while I was up there. Anyway, I gotta thank Vince and all his staff, and Mark and his people, for all the aid assistance they gave us in preparing these financials for you. And so I would tell you, as of that date, September thirty of two thousand and twelve, the city's in very good financial condition.
Any questions or comments? Sounds good.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Rick.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
All right. Let's go to the next item, Consider A Resolution Authorizing the Mayor to Enter to the First Amendment to the Interlocal Cooperation Agreement between the City of Kingsville and Texas A and M University.
Was that out open? Consider accepted?
Oh, it is, yes.
So, I'm sorry.
Oh, that's good, that's what I got you for. Among other things. Company and all really good stuff today. Is there any motion on that? Okay, motion of Mayor Commissioner Luber to accept the comprehensive annual financial report executed by Commissioner Pecos. Any other discussion? Roll call vote.
Commissioner Pecos?
Yes.
Commissioner Panha?
Yes.
Commissioner Garcia?
Yes.
Commissioner Luber?
Yes.
Mayor Puguet?
Yes. Next item is Consider Resolution Authorizing the Mayor to Enter to the First Amendment to the Interlocal Cooperation Agreement between the City and Texas A and M University of Kingsville relating to engineering design work for Clever Avenue, from Clever County Courthouse to Third Street.
Mayor, City Commissioner, Charlie Cuthbert, City Engineer, and Director of Public Works. This is a resolution item for the First Amendment for the interlocal agreement between the City of Kingsville and Texas A and M University of Kingsville Engineering Department for doing the, the design work on the Clever Avenue. I have to, I have to say, and Dr. Nix with the Dean of Engineering is here with the design, and I have to say that the Engineering Department at A and M Kingsville and the students have been doing an outstanding job on the design work for the Clever Avenue project, which is from the Clever County Courthouse. which is from the Clever County Courthouse to Third Street where the new stadium is going to be. There are some, some, there were some upon review, some review, there were some elements that we needed to upgrade, pedestrian and ADA elements, just to name a few. So that was the reason behind maybe extending the deadline with the university for this amendment. And that's the reason behind this.
Okay, are there any questions?
I have a couple of questions.
Yes, ma'am.
Charlie, it says that the additional amount of six thousand dollars is going to increase the contract price to thirty-five. And it is for additional engineering design for, at Sixth Street?
Yes, Sixth Street has some of the pedestrian elements or ADA elements. We're talking audible push buttons, better ADA ramps and things like that.
So you're just going to upgrade what's there?
Upgrade what's there. And we're upgrading the whole, the whole stretch of roadway, so to speak, with ADA ramps and things like that.
But that wasn't included in the original since it went from courthouse to?
Not entirely, no. It was included, but not up to current ADA standards.
Okay, are we going to have, are we going to have anything else come up between now and then? Or are we covered for everything that they're looking at?
We're going to be covered for everything.
I told this, we'll finish the project, but Steve Nix is here and he can maybe speak to that.
Nick? If you would like to.
He was hoping not to speak. Let's get him up here.
This is going to finish the project.
Yeah, we're looking at a little more extension.
Very interested in seeing what these guys are doing. Where are we going to get a presentation out of this?
That's the next question.
Well, that is a good question.
Yes.
Where's our plan?
Our plan is a public meeting, which is in August. We're going to have a formal presentation. And I'm, my plan was to have a tour. It's called the presentation tour, not just to the city commission, which would be the first and foremost, but to the downtown management district as well and other committees that would like to see this presentation of what the new design is going to look like.
Do you have any idea what it's going to cost us to do whatever y'all are saying?
What, what do you mean?
Good question. You know, we're looking at about, with the stamped concrete and other factors, we're looking at between eight hundred thousand and a million dollars.
And that's from end to end?
You're talking about actual construction?
Construction dollars.
That's all? I think it's going to be higher than, I mean, I don't want to.
Construction, engineering?
Manager or?
Well, we're going to be engineering. Well, thirty-five thousand dollars in engineering fees typically it's about ten, twenty percent when we hire a consultant. So you're looking at about a hundred thousand to two hundred thousand in engineering fees, which with the university, we got really for thirty-five thousand dollars.
We're happy about that, but the other stuff, does that include any of the equipment? And when you say construction?
And this, project of this type will not be done in-house. This will be contracted out, go out for bids. So the plans that we're building is a formal set of plans, signed and sealed by the city engineer. But we're going to go out for contractual bids for this. So as far as equipment is concerned, it's not the city's equipment that's going to be doing this work.
Right. Now, let me ask, if I could for the commission. One of the things that design firms or engineering firms typically provide is an estimate of probable costs. So is that something that we're going to get from our students as an estimate of probable costs for this project, which we can then use to compare against any bids that we receive?
We already tested?
Yeah, that's coming at the end of the. So I think some of the confusion that I'm kind of hearing might be, we were talking about this a year ago. We were talking about three million dollars.
Yeah.
Yeah. And typically ten percent.
Vince really knows how to make eight hundred thousand dollars sound good. That's me.
Hope Charlie's right.
That's a lot.
Anyway, the extension that we're asking for is, just to be brutally honest about it, you're dealing with students, some things are taking a little longer than. They've gone through an education process, which is fantastic. I mean, these kids, I mean, essentially we've got a few extra assistants and engineers.
All right.
And so it's been an education process. They're turning out a good product.
Charlie, are some of the specific improvements that we're looking at?
Like I said, there are some ADA ramps that turn to current standards. And then, of course, like we mentioned, the signal, the signal, we want Sixth Street to be an audible signal. So when we talk ADA, we're not just talking about that person that's in a wheelchair. We're also talking about that person that might have a hearing impaired or might have a vision impairment as well. So you'll have an audible push button that'll chirp. And you'll have the countdown head that will count down for that person that's also hearing.
Oh, we got ramps and we got Sixth Street, like, what else?
There's ramps and not just ramps along Sixth Street. We're talking ramps, I mean, not just on Sixth Street at that intersection. We're talking ramps from point A to point B.
Are we talking about like wider sidewalks, different type parking?
The sidewalks, there are some different kinds of parking, yes, there are some different. But that was part of the original design anyway, of the parking scheme. And so was the sidewalk. We're not really finding a right way to do more sidewalks. But we are doing some sidewalk improvements as well, some more aesthetics on those sidewalks as well. There's going to be some lighting. We're also, one of the new things that we're adding as part of this amendment was some conduit, dirotic conduit from point A to point B. It's very important to have that infrastructure underneath, under there and allows the time to do it for communications. And then we're also doing electrical conduit from point A to point B.
We're not widening the sidewalks or?
Uh, not really, no. There are some portions that we are looking at, that we are adding sidewalks. And that portion is closer towards, towards the Third Street area over there by the Methodist Church. Those are getting the big sidewalk improvements. As far as the front end, or what I call zero lot, which is downtown, really, Clever, not Clever, from Sixth to like the HEB, that's limited space. So we don't have room to widen sidewalk there and hinder parking there. But most of the sidewalk improvements is further down by Third Street. There's areas that we don't have any sidewalk. And we're going to add sidewalk there. So over there is where a lot of the improvements are on the sidewalks.
Thanks for enlightening the specifics, getting the public to know.
Yes, yes.
That you're going to spend a million dollars on. Are you going to do anything with the street? I have some elected officials from the county that have complained about the street when they have to do a walk in a parade. It's too bad.
Uneven. Well, the street is going to be redone. It's going to be redone with concrete. And we're looking at different options of concrete, stamped concrete to make it look like pavers and things like that.
I like that.
So we're looking at some different options on there.
All right, look forward to the report.
Thanks, Vince.
It's a resolution?
It's a motion, I think. So watch it now, please. Motion made by Commissioner Garcia, seconded by Commissioner Luber. Everybody tried to get the motion here. Who made the motion here? Motion made by Commissioner Pena to accept the resolution, seconded by Commissioner Luber. Commissioner Garcia. I think we spoke at the same time. Okay. No, that's good now. Any other discussion? Roll call vote.
Commissioner Pena?
Yes.
Commissioner Garcia?
Yes.
Commissioner Luber?
Yes.
Commissioner Pecos?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes. Next item is consider introduction of our ordinance pending the fiscal year two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen budget of the general fund for the city of Kingsville for a First Amendment to the interlocal agreement with Texas A&amp;M Kingsville raising the groundwork for Clever Avenue.
Sheriff, commissioners, this is the introduction of budgeting for agenda item number eleven that y'all just had presented to you, the six thousand dollars increase.
Okay. And it's just coming out of our fund balance that we had?
Yes, sir.
Our excess fund we had from two thousand twelve?
Yes, sir.
Anybody have any questions about that? That is an introduction item. So we'll go to the next item. Consider a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter to an interlocal cooperation agreement between the city of Kingsville and Texas A&amp;M Kingsville relating to usage of facilities and signage. Come on up, Scott. So what we're going to hear?
Well, good evening, Scott Gines, Vice President, Athletics and Recreation at the university. Really the genesis of this agreement dates back probably about eighteen months ago. We were making an attempt to transform Abilene Stadium, if you will, the track and the field surface and some of the other amenities around it. As you might recall, it's a partnership agreement. It was funded by, it came from the institution itself, or fee-based revenues. Really it's based on the traffic that we generated into that stadium. So the partners involved are a couple ISDs, several different discussions with the city and support thereof. And then the other events that we've expanded. For a quick example, over about ninety days last fall, hosted twenty-nine football games in that facility alone. So this interlocal agreement is to really integrate that partnership with the city through the main facilities, the signage, and the other opportunities that are there to make Kingsville a destination sport, or a destination spot with regard to sport in itself and the different levels and championships that we do most and continue to pursue.
Tell us about some of the championships that you're going to try to pursue with the, with now we build the track.
Well, the most recent one's obviously bringing back UIL to Kingsville. We signed late this fall a two-year agreement of UIL track and field. Over a thousand participants took place third week in April.
What class is that, two A, three A, or is it?
We were one A, three A.
One A, three A?
It was a combination, yes.
Thousand kids?
Yes, over a thousand.
From the region?
Yes.
Most of those kids got stay in hotel rooms?
Correct.
Hotel rooms?
Correct.
Okay, thousand of them?
Absolutely. Actually, our aggregate data for the fall, or for the fall itself was a little bit over a hundred fifty-nine thousand people visiting the stadiums via account, if you will, from that standpoint. July fifteenth here this month, NCAA just released the opportunity to bid on a litany of Division Two national championships. Track and field is one of those that was opened. Declaration of intent, the bid will take place by August nine. One has to do that, we have a lengthy meeting on that this morning. And then the finalization of that, September sixteenth. The championship, national championships that are open are twenty fifteen through twenty eighteen. So it's a four-year window there. I know the city of San Angelo and Angelo State will in fact bid on it. But one of the expansions, the most costly and important expansion to that stadium was actually the track itself and positioning it to be able to host events of, track and field events of that caliber.
Are you going to bid on it?
Yes, we're presenting, we're preparing ourselves to do that. And in terms of participants in that, that is a large group because it's a national championship event. There are three hundred and seventy-seven men and women individually. So you've got about just under seven hundred and fifty participants that will come to compete for national championships. It's a full week long event, four days of the events itself. Wednesday evening requires a banquet space, if you will, of twelve hundred. So we're trying to address that part there. The introductory meeting itself requires a space that will kind of.
Does San Angelo have something like that?
They do, and the Janelle Center, they're on campus and their arenas as well as their convention center. There are other amenities that we have and that we've addressed to the stadium itself in terms of having the opportunity to witness or watch multiple field events. We do have, through construction over the last four years, one to plus this year in terms of multiple throwing event stations and multiple vault stations from that standpoint. So there are a lot of things about the competitive track, the practice facilities, and proximity of what we do have regardless of its age of construction.
Did we lose that, that agreement with the UIL agreement with the one A's?
Did we lose it? We did. It's, I'm trying to think of these. We haven't had it probably four years.
It's been a while. Longer than that?
No, it's been about four years. The head of UIL has been the athletic director over the name of Coach Fisley. And he just merely, without letting anyone really know. We learned about it on the evening news. Yeah, yeah. They just made it without giving us an opportunity to do a bid or do anything to test you.
Scott, this money is twenty-five thousand per year for up to ten years for about two hundred and eighty thousand dollars.
Correct.
What general, what fund is it going to go to?
It's actually going to go into the amortization schedule, the tenure to pay for the.
So it's the athletic department?
Well, towards the actual facility enhancements that occurred about this time last year.
How much did the field cost you?
The field itself was about one point seven and some of the external entrance items and what have you at the shop were about six hundred thousand. That's on separate business plan.
Can you reveal the agreements that you have with the ISDs?
Can I reveal those? Well, they're public knowledge.
Yeah, and that's, is that comparable to?
You've got a, you're half of the lowest one. The other two are fifty.
How much?
Fifty and a.
Per year, per ISD?
Per year, correct.
For ten years?
I believe we're on five-year notes with renewable aspects to that, given the nature of the agreements, the ENF system and what we're allowed.
They might use the stadium though for their games, merit, but.
Correct. We expanded those agreements progressively over the last six years. Let's say expanded them into multiple sports. Probably most significantly expanded them into practices, practice opportunities. And so far it's the middle school contest. Just really to be a better partner with our city from that standpoint. Wrong, right, or indifferent, the business of sports is one of the top three industries in all fifty states. So we want to play our part in doing that. One of the great benefits we have our facilities, I mean, we can take a walk from Abilene Stadium and walk through all three stadiums in the arena and back in about eleven minutes. So the proximity of our venues and the parking that surrounds them really is, it is a point of destination. And we can continue to prove that together.
Any questions? You know, originally, y'all came to me and this was, has it been a long time? Gosh. Oh, Ken Oliver. And if you think about Abilene Stadium, what venue in Kingsville? Because more people in town, not just at the best, but people eating in our restaurants has been annoying. And I won't, nothing to tell you. Between Abilene games and high school playoff games and track and field, it's, there's not any, not any other event that I'm aware of that we have that does a better job of that. So with that in mind, I thought, you know, this would be a good thing for tourism dollars to go into. But my tractor jack lawyer here.
Sorry.
Informed me that that's against the law. And as my son, who was bailing out of jail one day, said, Dad, the law's got to be changed. That law's got to be changed. I cannot believe that you can't use tourism dollars for something like this. It makes no sense to me.
There's dear exceptions and we don't mean them.
Oh, yeah, and it actually tells you what cities are made of. Or else. Just trying to keep you out of jail. So we can use tourism dollars, which makes perfect sense. So we have a hundred thousand dollars going from selling these wrecking balls to fifty. But that's where you bust your debt? That's well, twenty-five, we're going to go for that.
Yeah, a hundred, so twenty-five we go for this and we can still do that, seventy-five we do. A hundred thousand goes for fifteen years. There's a fund.
Any other questions?
Courtney. Having read the resolution and having heard the purpose, do you have a comment or a legal?
Well, the money is coming from a legitimate source. And in speaking with Mr. Gines on the phone, he's advised that they have billboards in the stadium and then along the roadway as well, that they would allow the city usage to scroll messages for public service or public health and safety issues. And they also, as you know, the city doesn't really have. And they also, as you know, the city doesn't really have a lot of times adequate facilities for holding meetings and things like that, and they've offered space to us for those as well.
And twenty-five thousand dollars a year.
Well, that's not the real purpose is to, is to try to help encourage your economic development, and tourism, tourism, tourism is economic development.
And I, if I may, I don't think you answered my question correctly, because...
Okay, perhaps I didn't understand it.
Because that's not what was said in terms of what we're looking to pay for. Because basically, we're talking about stadium and field, right?
Well, that's, that's your business engine for the...
That's, right, exactly.
...economic development.
And nowhere is that stated, and I'm looking at transparency, basically. I mean, nowhere is it in the resolution. We reference...
Well, we're providing them the money, and they can put it in whatever, you know, fund they need to put it into so long as we receive the ability to use the meeting facilities and the signage and things like that that Mr. Gines had stated in the agreement said that they'll allow us to do, to pass on the message.
You're okay with...
Yes, sir, because so many times, once, once we give them the funding source, as long as they allow us to do things that they're stating in the agreement that they're going to allow us to do, I mean, it doesn't really matter to us what pot they put the money in and what they do with it so long as we still get the benefit of the bargain with regards to the rooms and the signage issues and everything.
And continuing your questioning, that begs the point, what brings to my mind is how many, how many meetings are we going to hold on campus? And is it worth the twenty-five thousand dollars for all those meetings we're going to be holding?
What, as well as the increases of the signage, like for having a literivate in an event or if we're having some type of other emergency situation?
My particular, my particular concern here is, we need to put, we need to connect purpose and funding to make sense. And to me, at this moment, twenty-five thousand dollars for a meeting place sounds like a big amount of money to pay, where we could get meeting space for hardly nothing. That's, that's, I'm not against the idea, but we need to connect, we need to have a better connection for those two.
Can you put in the resolution the fact that we believe that this is, that this is beneficial to the city because it's going to create economic development and that it's, it adds to our tax base, I mean, our tax, sales tax and hotel motel tax?
Any outsider coming in and reading this?
And I understand the question's point.
It's very misleading.
You could take this thing out of context.
It's really, it would really look badly.
Yes. It's a very simple ally. No, we, as the mayor alluded to, it's been many months, spanning over a year, trying many different avenues to craft the clarity of that partnership. So we don't push back or belie, you know, the transparency on that, and that's, when Commissioner Loubert asked on the funding thereof, I thought it's going to be dedicated in one of those restricted accounts for that.
I'm not against that at all.
It's kind of like...
The connecting, the connecting with the, with the B, you know what I mean?
Figuring out the language that passes muster.
Yes, yeah.
Well, we got some time. We're not gonna, we're not going to have any money available to lock up or anyway.
Correct.
So why don't we continue this, and we'll look at it, and we'll have a chance to put some language in there, because it, really, truly, it does something to these being there because if nobody that was at this meeting saw this and with that, just that resolution, it really doesn't look right. Yeah, yeah, it's, what the heck are you doing?
Conceptually strong, but language is a little bit cloudy.
Yeah.
Mr. Burns, what happened to the Cactus Bowl?
What happened to the Cactus Bowl? It went away. Not to be smart.
Who has it?
No one has it.
Nobody?
No one has it. It's a great question, too, and I don't mean this in a critical sense. I came here in August of oh-seven as athletic director, and we didn't have a Cactus Bowl that year. One of the curious things to me to know is, nobody asked me for the duration of twelve months of that year, the question you just did. And that's an amazing thing. The Cactus Bowl had been here for better part of a decade, nine years, plenty of serves. The biggest, biggest gap there is a title sponsor, title sponsor with regard to, okay, this is something we want to televise, that is something that kind of moves those things. It is a great event, a lovely event, particularly Tuesday night, family night, and Wednesday night at JK Northwood. It's a great event. It's a lot of work, it's a lot of work for our staff and our folks on the committee, which are, which are community members from that standpoint. It's one of those things that can drive economic development, and I think successfully did over time and over years, and always had a black muzzle, which means it always had a good mission, too. And it's still open for partnership from that standpoint, but you got a little bit arduous coming up with about a quarter million dollars to pull off.
Yeah, that's what it was.
Yeah. And from our staffing standpoint, you know, we're talking about the clarity of the language. I think that's the most positive thing we can do to strengthen that affinity or that partnership, but it is a lot of work for our staff, and I don't mean that in a negative way. We're being at the Kansas Bowl with my senior associate AD while we were running four high school playoff games here in the stadium in an electrical storm on two on Friday, two on Saturday. They do a great job with that. We, we need it for our business plan. I think the city wants that, or covers that partnership as well. Not any one of those events necessarily is going to be a watershed net yield for your party, but the cumulative effect of having twenty-nine, thirty, thirty-two games over span about a hundred days is a pretty powerful thing.
I think the committee just got worn out.
It did, it did.
There was just a few people that were doing vault and working, it was a lot of work. People realize the heart of those.
Correct.
Picking teams and making sure you get all the equipment, referees and hotel rooms and feeding them and all, just...
Because we transport...
Final task.
Yeah, we, we transport, I think we were rosters of, what, fifty-six or sixty, one of the two, you know, flying them from around the country and what have you, but that's a powerful thing, to expose people to South Texas, Kingsville, and football, the way we play down here, so. But those type of things, partnerships, are certainly, I mean, they're certainly on the table for me in terms of being open-minded and looking at how we can expand those things. Truly.
Well, the twenty-five thousand dollars will play a role?
In the Cactus Bowl? No. And that's dedicated to an amortization schedule and build that's already forced for executive...
Wait to be paid.
But I'm happy to come back with a case statement to oppose the Cactus Bowl. That is a championship for four years.
You know, Northern Alabama, Florence, has had that, had the football championship game for the last, what, twenty-five years, and it's...
West Texas is getting ready to bid on that.
But the city of Florence, I don't know what they put into it now, but it was fifteen, twenty years ago, they put a hundred thousand dollars into that game.
Correct.
They wrote a check for a hundred thousand dollars a year for that championship game.
But they're still having it?
Yeah.
Yes, in fact, that game is played, Northern Alabama plays their home games by campus at the high school, which is where the championship takes place. So that's a multi-layered partnership, and also have facilities, divisions in football all day. So it's between that ISD, the city, part of their CBD, and you receive all that.
Are they in Brooklyn State?
Oh, yeah.
Have they, progressively over time, yes. Locker rooms, playing surface, synthetic, et cetera, so. But we actually have a bigger and better venue here.
All right, thanks, Scott.
Thank you, folks, very much.
You're right. Okay. Want to take a break? You're going to take a break?
Okay.
Well, we're getting, we'll take that, and we're not taking, and we're not taking any action, learn to change the language on it.
Take your time.
At rest.
Right, little problem.
I appreciate that. Unless somebody has to object.
No, we're just, Courtney, we appreciate this.
All right, then let's go to the next item. Consider resolution authorized city manager to execute an interlock agreement for E-911 Public Tech D entry point services between the city and municipal council of departments.
Well, I hope this...
Are they going to give us money?
Hope this resolution is self-explanatory because the police chief isn't here tonight, and with Julian back there.
We've got Julian there.
So, any questions? I hope that Julian can respond to, Julian, do you want to step forward just in case? The chief's not here tonight. Anyway, this basically continues on the agreement we've had.
Is that the E, is that a type?
No, it's not, emergency I want. So, Julian, I guess you can respond to questions.
I'll try.
Does anybody have any comments on this?
I think everyone's...
There was a question I wanted to...
It's a two-year contract that comes up every year.
And this will be the third time that we would be entering into the same agreement and the language changes other than the date.
I make a motion that we authorize the management to enter the entry.
Second. I propose to make, Commissioner Loubert, to accept this resolution, say everybody can vote. Any other discussion?
I'm sure Commissioner Garcia would, would have his buddy done this since he was going like this a while ago.
Yeah.
Roll call vote.
Commissioner Peck?
Yes.
Commissioner Benya?
Yes.
Commissioner Loubert?
Yes.
Mayor Pigott?
Yes, next time, it's consider waiving landfill fees associated with community cleanup project for health and safety of residents performed by First Humana Methodist Church, U M Army Church.
Right, Mayor, this is, you have what I have, there's, I think much of this has already occurred, perhaps all of it. There was no estimate of total tonnage or anything like that. I think it goes for a good cause. We are basically being requested to waive the landfill fees associated with...
Hey, Benya, is he going to give out that much?
Is that a staff recommendation?
Yes, yes, yeah.
So, I propose to waive this fee by Commissioner Peck, is there a second? Is there a second? Okay, saying my Commissioner Garcia, let's go ahead and ask this discussion, yes. Do you have any idea how much they, they brought you up there?
Yes, they made one call today, so far they made, it was a ten and a half, a precinct four by day.
Yeah.
They're not done, I don't think, basically, they have more.
A ten and a half so far?
Just one of the...
I think they're finishing up, though. They're not going to be here, they started last Monday, and I think they're through, through tomorrow, I think, maybe.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's for a good cause, I don't think it's going to be...
Well, what they were doing is they were making ramps for elderly people, and I think Commissioner Lumbas helped identify some need people that needed, I think they actually redid one of somebody's houses.
And we can, if I'm not mistaken, I think we're accumulating a total tonnage being brought to Wigan before that backed to the commission at a later date. We just don't happen to have an estimate in advance of how much that will be.
Well, just, have we done that before?
Not that I'm aware of, not since I've been here. Typically, when we, typically when we bring these to the city commission, for like downtown festivals, we have an estimate of staff costs and that type of thing, but there just wasn't a reasonable way to estimate how much tonnage they might bring to them.
Twelve and a half, what's that cost?
You're looking at twenty-six, seventy-five per ton, four eight after that.
Did you say twenty-six, seventy-five?
Per ton.
Per ton, twenty-six dollars?
Seventy-five cents per ton.
Okay, roll call vote, so it's not a whole lot.
Commissioner Benya?
Yes.
Commissioner Garcia?
Yes.
Commissioner Lumbas?
Yes.
Commissioner Peck?
Yes.
Mayor Pigott?
Yes. Next time, it's consider introduction of ordinance amended in the city of Kingsville code of order, sec. 5, Article 2, so we're providing for increase in sewer rates.
Mayor, commissioners, these are scheduling fish rates in accordance with our model, water wastewater model that the city entered into August and September twenty-ten, and so the model runs through just for year fifteen, which is two thousand fourteen, fifteen. And these, the increase is scheduled for this fiscal year in accordance to that model is one percent increase on the water and a three percent increase in the wastewater. And again, that would be in accordance to the model study that we did previously with HGR Engineering.
Could you come, I mean, could you come up with the, that's a five-year?
Yes, yes. I've got a history of the increase on fiscal year two, one, that also...
I'm just curious what the increase in the five-year increase will be. Of course, this is one of those where I'm, I'm going to have trouble with, I know residents out there are tired of increased water rates, you know, increased sewer rates, and, boy, I'm going to have to do a real good selling job.
Okay, on the water over the five-year period is a seven percent increase, on the wastewater is a sixteen percent increase, but... But also recall that the city had frozen the rates for many years and we're playing catch-up in that process on our rate models, and...
However, our taxes have increased.
Well, our property taxes have not increased unless...
So we have not, we have not increased property taxes.
And one of the reasons, just for the commission's benefit, one of the reasons we haven't increased property taxes is because of the increases on the utility side.
But our appraisals have increased.
Yes, that, that happened.
So we are getting more money even by keeping our tax rate the same. And how many years have we been doing this? Even skipping the law?
We started doing the models back in, to my knowledge, oh-five, oh-six, that's the first year I came in, and they had been doing the models previously to them.
Right, so it's every, pretty much every year we're doing it.
But we're, we're calling, just in wastewater, we jumped twenty percent because we had, for many years, not been addressing and keeping pace with it. Now, the water wastewater is an enterprise fund, it's self-contained, and we're charging the users of those water services and wastewater services and building the infrastructure that will flow with that so we can do the delivery of goods and services for that book of business.
If I could, Commissioner, one of the, it's best, I think, from a policy perspective to have smaller increases annually, one, two, three percent, than it is to have fifteen, twenty percent increases every seven or eight years because you haven't increased them sufficiently. The other thing I want to point out is, I think the commission passed the plan which forecasted these increases, so we're just complying with, if I'm not mistaken, I think it happened before I was here.
That's correct.
Complying with, not that the commission can't make a different decision, but complying with, with, with a plan that was put into effect.
This commission?
No, no, not this commission, but ASID commission. Now, I'm not saying you can't make a different decision, but I'm just saying, it was a plan that was put in effect by another commission, adopted by another commission years ago. The other thing is, these costs are increasing in large part because of costs that are imposed upon cities by the federal government, either additional environmental requirements, treatment requirements, those continue to come down the pipeline. So to the, to the large extent, we're simply passing along costs that are passed along to us. Now, some of our costs, of course, are due to increases that we decided upon, increases in employee pay, increases, other increases that we as a, as a city have approved, but by, the lion's share of costs come to us because of additional environmental requirements imposed upon cities and other people that provide private, even private, not just cities, but private providers of water and sewer services. So, the large part, we can only go so far without increasing these costs because the costs are imposed upon us, they're not, they're not discretionary.
You know, it helps sometimes to, is get comparables. We've done that fast march show where my mom, you know, here is, I know we usually kind of end up writing the...
where my log in our ears, and I know we usually kind of end up right in the middle on that, and I know sometimes it's not fair that, because we use well water in most of the cities, talking to us, you buy water from corporate facilities, but, and I'm not sure how fair that is, but just to show what the rates are, and with the drought situation as it is, we might, we might care better than what we handled in the past, I don't know.
Well, droughts create opportunities and problems, because I've been told that people give up on watering their own, and so the revenues go up.
Yeah.
I've been told by others that they water more, so the revenues go up.
I think on the average, some people just give up.
Yeah, and, and yet, we've got fixed costs, so whether your revenues go up or down, we've got fixed costs. And we've got debt service, we've got employees, we've got a services system that we have. So, I'm not here to tell the commissioner I don't have any choices, because it does, but I'm just saying, we are simply, for the most part, passing along costs that are imposed upon us by other governments, most of the federal government, and PCQ.
Okay, this is an introduction, does anybody else have anything else they want to talk about?
As far as, we talk about wastewater, and we put in tons of money into our processing plants.
Oh, right.
That's where most of our debt is. And we have to pay for that.
Usually, that's in response to federal mandates.
Yeah. That should be the bulk factor.
Yes.
Council of the boroughs, when we first came overboard in two thousand five, I think we borrowed close to eleven million dollars, and now about eleven million, seven or eight million of it went to waste, waste treatment.
CO two thousand five.
Okay, well, we've already talked about it, but I guess I'd go ahead and bring up the next item, consider introduction of ordinance amended in the city of Keesville Cove in order to see chapter five, article three, water provision for an increase in water rates. Anything else anybody else wants to talk about this? Okay, this is an introduction item. Next item is consider introduction of ordinance amended in the fiscal year two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen budget of the general fund for city secondary certification and city manager travel and payment. Well, Mayor, you're already certified as far as I'm concerned. Oh, you want the certificate? I can make one up. Say a lot of this thing. Give you a printer.
Mayor Commissioners, it's an introduction budget amendment that would increase the city manager budget, well, then, two thousand dollars, and we have a worksheet provided to you on the budget, and I'll get it.
How are we gonna pay for it?
The appraisal district, we had some savings that we could reduce that line item to cover that expense.
All right, any questions? What's it coming from, Mark?
We had, there was a little bit of a red item that came back on the cap, on the fees that are charged on the appraisal district, so we had all those savings in our expected budget, so we're able to transfer that from that line item to cover this.
Okay, all right, let's go to the next item. Consider introduction of ordinance amended in the fiscal year two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen budget of the general fund for, that's city council training, that's what we just went over, that's what the money's going for.
Yes, we're also putting the same line item for two thousand dollars, it would be funding a thousand, two thousand increase in commission, that would be four hundred dollars, some provided members.
Yeah, I think if I could, we're, we're now, I think, because of discussions we've had and passed, allocating travel evenly among the commission members, including beginning with this, this budget amendment, proposing retract four hundred dollars per member, and in the budget that's being proposed for next fiscal year, we'll propose the same thing, that a set amount of money be proposed for each commission member.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Next item is consider introduction of ordinance amended, consider introduction of ordinance amended in the fiscal year two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen, municipal obligations, two thousand thirteen, two thousand eleven fund budgets, install utility, water utility fund budget for street drainage projects.
Mayor Commissioners, I'll provide you with an overview of the sources of the original budget, and then different projects that we provided, I provided a worksheet, so let me walk you through the introduction of the budget amendment, and I'll walk you through the details. The first one is a reduction of the Fund sixty-five, which is our CO twenty-eleven, that we budgeted a portion for streets, and so, we have projects that were originally budgeted, but we're able to reduce that a little bit. And then, in Fund sixty-eight, which is our brand-new CO that we passed in January, February, on the drainage projects portion, that portion would be five hundred and sixty-six thousand eight fifty-five would be, need to be increased in that one. And then, we had originally in Fund fifty-five, now, so we're kind of walking through what fifty-five is. Fifty-five is the water, the utility portion that we're collecting from the residents and the commercial come in, and those revenues are used for debt service to pay our debt service schedule. And originally, when we budgeted the projects, we didn't know if we were actually gonna pass the CO that was proposed, but we went ahead and listed as expenditures, potential expenditures for the nine hundred and twenty-five thousand. Now that we have the CO that was issued, we've moved those out to Fund sixty-eight and provided the funding in there. Now, I can walk you through the spreadsheet that I provided, and we started out at eight hundred and nine thousand one hundred in the Fund sixty-five, and then I provided you with a list, and the list B is the asphalt streets and expenditures projected fiscal year thirteen at repriced hot mix dollars, and that's six hundred and thirty thousand one fifty-one. And then I provided you with a schedule E that also had the street rejuvenation expenditures for rejuvenating for the July eleventh through the end of the fiscal year, and that's thirty-five thousand. Then also, there's expenditures for seal application and striping or lines, the thirty-two thousand four seventy-eight is Schedule D, also provided. And then Schedule H is seventy-five thousand for the patching, dural patcher, and the pro patcher. That comes up to a sum total of seven hundred and seventy-two thousand six twenty-nine projected expenditures for fiscal year thirteen. We had budgeted initially the eight hundred and nine thousand one hundred, so that gave rise to the reduction in that one particular line item in the figure of thirty-six thousand four seventy-one. Then also, we had some projects in the Fund sixty-five for drainage that we don't need a budget amendment on at this time. And also moving down, we had in Fund sixty-eight, which is a CO twenty thirteen drainage portion, we had originally zero dollars budgeted at the beginning of this fiscal year. Then we have two hundred and two thousand, which is List A, which is a reclass, reclassing from concrete streets classification into drainage, because we have the ability to utilize those funds. Now, if you think about the drainage as being part of the infrastructure, the streets, actually, the concrete streets that are more permanent in nature are part of the skeleton for your drainage, so we can charge those to the funding available on the drainage. And then I provided you also with List F of two hundred and fifty-six thousand three hundred for a concrete intersection bridge budgeted in fiscal year twelve, but was not able to be completed in fiscal year twelve, and so those are also provided in the funding. And then there's a list also, List C, which is a hundred and eight thousand five fifty-five for drainage projects listed, restated with street list to be completed for the remainder of the fiscal year also. And that's a sum total of five hundred and sixty-six thousand eight fifty-five, and then, so that gives rise to the budget amendment that's needed for Fund sixty-eight in relation to the drainage. The, there was also the reduction, we're pulling off the nine hundred and twenty-five thousand that originally budgeted in Fund zero fifty-five, and we're moving it to Funds fifty. And we provided you with the list of the work to be performed, and I believe Charlie's, Mr. Creden is here to assist you with that list a little.
Sure, Charlie? The list before you is what we're gonna finish up for the rest of the fiscal year. And we've already, we've already done most of these streets, or half of these streets on this fiscal year, but the bulk of it that's coming up is, a lot of them has to do with the drainage elements involved. And when Mr. Rushing was talking about all these concrete streets with the heavy skeleton of the drainage, we talked about the crown of the roadway, that that conveys water, and then, of course, the curb and gutter section of the roadway, then a lot of our improvements, we had to come in and do those, a lot of these street improvements, we had to come in and do those drainage work. So, that's, that's the, the nature of this. As far as the list is concerned, you'll, you'll notice that we've done some of the concrete streets already done in Phase One, we're in the middle of this, actually, it's Phase Two, we're in the middle of Phase Three, concrete streets that we're gonna be working on here pretty soon. You approved the last time, or approved the, or awarded the bid, and that was Phase Three, a couple of years ago, on concrete streets. Now, in the asphalt streets, we're going in full blast on that, and we're in the middle of Shelton Street right now, doing some asphalt work there. The rain did, it's a blessing in some cases, but in my case, it's a deterrent, because I end up being a little, or we end up being a little bit delayed on, on some of this work when the rain happens, we have to rain delays.
If I could, yeah, a management perspective, you'll recall, we came before the city commission several months ago with, at a workshop, we talked about hot mix and street design, and what we were doing wrong, and what we wanted to do right, and how we were gonna try to get away from seal code, you go to hot mix, because in the long run, hot mix is probably less expensive, because you get longer life from your streets. In the short run, it's more expensive, because you have to pay more to put it in, but in the long run, and I think, I think what we wanted to do is, we wanted to go to what's more effective in the long run. So, essentially, this is the first budget amendment that you're being presented with, that reflects the additional costs required to implement that new program for this fiscal year. We're going from a program that we thought would cost eight hundred and nine thousand dollars to a program that's gonna cost about one point four million, primarily because we're going to hot mix, and also because we're incorporating the stormwater drainage improvements into the street improvements. We agree, we don't want to come back years later, or we don't want to put in a new street and then come back anytime soon after that, and tear up the street to put in stormwater drainage improvements, so we're doing them simultaneously. That's kind of slowing us down a little bit, I think you'll agree with. And so, while we budgeted for sixty blocks of street overlay improvement, which is about four miles, we're probably not gonna get sixty blocks done, certainly not with the rain delays that we've had, and not with trying to make the stormwater drainage, the curb and gutter improvements, stormwater inlet improvements that we're making along the way. But it's a smarter way to approach it, it's more expensive, it's smarter, it's more expensive in the short run, smarter in the long run, and it's less expensive in the long run. So, unfortunately, we're in a position where we have to pay the cost today to realize the benefits several years down the road. And so, you're, you're gonna see some additional costs come through, but we think this will get us through the end of this, this will be the issue.
Any questions?
Sir, the list you provided us, is that the column on the left, is that numerically the way you're gonna repair the streets, or are you just gonna huff around?
That's, that's correct, that's not in any order. It is, we do have a.
Prioritized?
We, we do have a system where we have prioritized, where we're posting that, we're updating it weekly, by the way.
On the website?
We've already put it on the website, we've put a map on the website of what streets we're gonna do this fiscal year, and as we're updating it, the color's changing on that street, you know, like Calvin and stuff like that. And that way, folks could see if they're, in this fiscal year, someone could get on the website and say, hey, look, my street's in red, that's scheduled to be replaced this year, and then once it turns blue, we can fix it. There's also, we also have a spreadsheet on there that had the schedule. Now, we changed that up last week, according to this new budget, and we figured out, hey, we're not gonna, we're not gonna do all sixty blocks this fiscal year, so let's remove X, Y, Z blocks, or X, Y, Z streets, we're still gonna finish it in this season, and there's a difference between fiscal year and, and, and the street season, and my goal is, we're still gonna complete those streets this season, just might not be in the fiscal year. That is, that is a commitment we've made to the taxpayers, and that's the commitment that we're gonna continue. And it's scheduled on there what streets and when they're coming in. Now, we had to tweak it up a little bit, I think the next one that we have to move up is something between Wells and Armstrong, was like a little half-block, block area that we're gonna, we're gonna do here soon, once we're done with Shelton. That had to be moved up, we're doing some other design work for some of the drainage. If it's above fifty thousand dollars of drainage work, we're gonna have to go out for bids, and we're gonna have to come up with our own set of plans, and we're doing that in-house, you know, I'm not going on with consulting to do the set of plans, you know, I'm more capable of doing it ourselves, and I'm confident in our engineering department to come up with their own plans, so we're gonna come up with set of plans and bid that out. There's some, some projects that, that were very minute as far as the drainage concerned, like the Shelton project that we're working on right now, we're gonna be able to get three quotes, we can get one contractor out and do, you know, a couple hundred dollars worth of curb and gutter work, but there are some streets out there that we're gonna really have to replace the curb and gutter. So, those are some of the factors that said, okay, we're gonna have to move this, out of this fiscal year. But again, this fiscal year, we're still gonna continue doing that work, our commitment is to do that work for this season. So, on this list, no, it's not on priority, sir, it, it, it's just, you know, broken down the projects. If you kind of see the scheme of things, so, the first list is A's, it is the concrete repairs, and then we go to asphalt, and then there are some drainage work on those asphalt streets, and then you'll go for some more maintenance of seal coating, and some rejuvenator stuff, and then, and then some, the Phase Three of the concrete street as well, so that's kind of how the priority was on the list as by the funding, not so much as far as the priority, what street's gonna get hit first. But we do have a street team that comes together bi-weekly, and we talk about what streets are gonna get priority as far as work scheduling is concerned.
Well, our, Mayor, if we're gonna continue, you've been complaining about potholes, how's that being addressed in the meantime?
Absolutely, potholes, we do have a schedule that we, one, we go around zones, two, we go around major corridors that we want to take care of. So, we do have a schematic, or a scheme of things of how we're addressing potholes. I can tell you this, and I think we've already addressed this, school's coming up soon, so we're gonna start looking at the school areas to do, to do a blitz, so to speak, on, on the schools, and not just the potholes, but we'll really get their crosswalks and signage as well. Yes, potholes is a problem, we do, and, and you'll see that we are budgeting its amount of dollars for the dural patch. We're getting that machine, and, and we'll get that machine to good use, I mean, it's been out there, and, and we have a dedicated crew that's just on potholes and just on the dural patch, and cold mix, and cold mix and dural patch are. Cold mix and dural patch are two different methods. The dural patch is a more permanent patch, if you will, than the cold mix, but the cold mix is like a banding. We do have a dedicated crew on the dural patch that, that's doing the zones, you know, just like the brush zones, we're doing the same thing there, but at the same time, every week, we're hitting a different dural fair, and then we'll, we'll go back, it's like maybe a six-week, six, actually a monthly cycle, that after about four or five months, we'll go back to the same dural fair, unless it's a hazard. If it's a big hazard, or it's a big pothole that just created, and you're gonna see something that happen from last week's rains, and the condition of our streets, the rains and, and the water gets in the cracks and stuff, and it pumps that stuff out, and you'll see some fresh ones. Just this morning, I saw some fresh ones, which the city manager brought to my attention. And there's some that are, that are, that are some priorities, and especially on these dural fairs, you know, we'll see them on Sixth Streets. We wanna take care of the ones on Sixth Street, we wanna take care of the ones that are gonna be on Corral or Fourteenth, or the heavy traffic areas, is the ones we wanna tackle first. So we'll get out of our schedule to do those, and then we'll hit the residential streets and the zones as well.
Wait, Charlie, I don't, I don't know if I remember, but correct me, is there a place somewhere in the website or the report that's advising us which, where the potholes are getting fixed? Is that?
Good question. No, there's not, and, and I apologize. What we have on the website is a street construction schedule.
The only reason I'm asking is because I, I mean, obviously we get bombarded, I get bombarded all the time on potholes, and I, you know, which ones are you working on?
We get definitely annoyed.
I have no idea, how to respond, you know, you know, I haven't seen the ones that are fixed.
You know, that's...
You know, maybe I'm missing...
We're doing such a good job that...
Well, I'm staying on... I'm staying on... I'm staying on... We're two best work.
No, that's a good, that's a good comment, and I really appreciate that. Again, that's something that I can bring up to the street team meeting, and it's something we can put on the website. If I'm saying we're going through zones, we can certainly put up a map and say, this is the zone we're filling in potholes this week. And when we, when we say zones, again, we're, we're hitting the residential streets, but when, when we say the dural fair, you know, this is where we're at on the dural fair. So we can definitely put that schedule, that potholeing schedule on the website and, and discuss it further on our street team. Can I ask you? Good, good observation.
All right. Any other questions? If not, that's an introduction, I'm gonna go to the next, I'd consider accepting grant an amount of three thousand dollars from Union Pacific Foundation.
Sheriff, Mr. Creden?
Union Pacific Foundation Board has approved a grant in the amount of three thousand dollars to keep Kingsville beautiful to support future cleanups.
Is there a motion on this?
Oh, no.
Second, let's make our commission's payment to accept this money accepted by both Commissioner Fackels and Commissioner Garcia. We have a tradition here at this commission that we never turn money down. Roll call vote.
Commissioner Benham?
Yes.
Commissioner Garcia?
Yes.
Commissioner Louver?
Yes.
Commissioner Fackels?
Yes.
Mayor Peet?
Yes. Next, it's an introduction item, amendment and ordinance for fiscal year two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen, known by budget for the city of Kingsville to accept the grant from Union Foundation for Kingsville, Kingsville Beautiful and Beautiful Community Affairs Department. That's just an introduction item. See if I have any questions about that. Okay. And we know the next item is introduction ordinance, meaning fiscal year two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen, general fund budget for community affairs to fund demolition projects through the remaining fiscal year.
Sheriff, commissioners, we have before you an introduction of an item that would appropriate thirty-five thousand eight hundred and thirty dollars, and it would be for the property-owned abatement agreements for July, August and September. For July is twelve thousand seven hundred and thirty dollars, August is four thousand two hundred and forty dollars, and September is seven thousand four hundred and twenty dollars, and the sum total of those is twenty-four thousand three hundred and ninety dollars. In addition, there's another eleven thousand four hundred and forty dollars, which are for two different divisions. One is for the water tank, and the other one is for the old fire training building to be taken down. And the sum total, that's eleven thousand four hundred for the thirty-five thousand eight thirty-two.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
All right. That's an introduction item, I think it's pretty self-explanatory where the money's coming from and what the projects are, so does anybody have any questions?
No.
No questions, and we'll go to the next item. Consider requests from county fund up to one-third of the estimated seventeen thousand three hundred and seventy-five dollar cost to repair the equipment farm at Ellie Ramey County Golf Course, which is contingent on the remaining funding being obtained from other sources.
Yeah. The, oh, this is yours or mine, Mark? The, the golf course manager has spoken to several of us, I think, including me, about the one-third of these proposed costs of renovating the shed where they keep the golf course. His explanation is pretty straightforward, and our cost, of course, which is on the next agenda item, it's five thousand seven hundred and two, but it's just something they've requested our assistance with. We've, we've typically tried to assist with the golf course from time to time, whether it be sprinkler heads or running sewer line with the bathroom, so it's no longer on septic, or the, the utility allowance, and so it stands with proposals to provide assistance here.
Do you have the fifty-seven?
Yes, we do, so, yeah, it's on the next agenda item, so, some additional revenues that we've, no, I guess it's expense savings.
Just saving.
So yes, we've got it in our existing budget.
Al, Al, this is gonna be a new roof, it's not gonna be something that's, we gotta patch, we're not?
No, it's gonna be a wired it.
Are we?
No, it's gonna be panels of a hundred and twenty-five feet long, twenty-five feet in width, there's fifty panels, it's gotta be replaced in a warehouse, in a car park or warehouse.
It's gonna be a whole brand-new roof?
Yes, sir. Starting from the top all the way to the end.
Can you get your bid from Gillespie?
I got it from Gillespie, and I got it from Mr. Billy Tippett, which he did was substantially more than, than rust. That's why I suggest not that long, delta Lopez.
Any questions about this?
The recent one, one of the main reasons I wanna do something with this roof is, nothing has been done since probably nineteen seventy-four, nineteen seventy-five, when it built, started. Second of all, we're housing a little bit over four hundred thousand dollars' worth of equipment in that building. Third is, my maintenance crew can't even eat lunch when it's raining outside, it's all the water coming in. So I, I was compelled to do something about it, and the only way I could do it was suggest that if Cleaver County, at a rain, and the city can come together a third apiece, we can accomplish this task, that wouldn't cost a whole bunch of money for anybody individually.
Did the county pass this to them?
Yes, county passed it to them. They agree with...
They had good humor, didn't they pass it?
Yes, sir. Yes. Yes.
The shed itself, is there a wood frame shed, shed, or a tall metal?
Tall metal.
Tall metal.
They're drowning all the way up to the top. You can wood break off once in a, once in a while.
I apologize, I'm...
Ross can hardly go to the shed.
Well, it's a bar.
It's a little bit, it's a hundred and twenty feet long. I've never hit a ball to the shed here.
The barn.
The shed.
I've never hit the barn yet with a golf ball. But in the recent, recent weeks, I have purchased three, three pieces of equipment more to assist me to maintain the golf course, to stay on top of all the cutting, with the help of the city that they do give hours to help me. Cleaver County does the same thing, we'll be able to stay on top of it. Obviously, we have three days of good rain. Tomorrow morning, the first day, first, get all my cool bags, start cutting grasses, get out of there.
Make a motion, we approve the cost before repair. Second, let's make our commission's payment to free these expenses to, to put on a new roof, you know, the barn out of the golf course, seconded by both Commissioner Garcia and Commissioner Fackels. Any other discussion? Roll call vote.
Commissioner Garcia?
Yes.
Commissioner Louver?
Yes.
Commissioner Fackels?
Yes.
Commissioner Benham?
Yes.
Mayor Peet?
Yes, next item is consideration of ordinance, meaning fiscal year two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen, budget for the general fund to assist with repair costs to the equipment bar at Ellie Ramey County Golf Course.
Sheriff, commissioners, if you, the introduction budget amendment to Agent Adam number twenty-four that was just presented, our fund of the seventeen thousand three seventy-five will be five thousand seven hundred and ninety dollars. Intervention item.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions? It's pretty self-explanatory. Hey, Al, sorry to keep you so long, many, you came to our record-setting meeting. Sorry to keep you so long.
No problem. Appreciate it, sir. Thank you.
Next item is consideration of an ordinance, meaning the fiscal year two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen, general fund budget for the community affairs, purchase benches, and litter recycling incentives for the downtown area.
Sheriff, commissioners, you have behind this budget amendment a list, to be honest, that includes twenty-one thousand one hundred and seventy-five dollars in total. Of course, we already have six hundred dollars that have come in for that purpose, which leaves us fourteen thousand seven hundred and seventy-five that we need to come up with. The, this would include five benches, five plaques and the holders that are associated with that, and then an additional fifteen trash cans or trash receptacles that we need in this project for purchasing. Cynthia Martin, I believe, is here, if you wanna walk through some of the details, whatever you want, you know?
Any questions about trash cans?
Yes, sir. I'm talking about the bench, boy.
You got a first bench, but on the bench franchise. Are the current benches gonna be replaced by the new benches?
No. No, the current benches, the current benches have been renovated, their slats replaced and refinished, so these would be additional benches. They would go, say, in front of the Texas Theater, you know, to soar along down quarter and four hundred blocks, because the benches currently are grouped around Sixth and Cleveland and Seventh and Cleveland, intersections where the bulk out will finish. There really aren't any other benches anywhere in Sixth and Cleveland.
That's not gonna look very cohesive. That's not gonna look very cohesive that these benches only exist.
No, it won't. What brought forward the attention to the benches was that we had, the Chamber of Commerce came forward wanting to donate a bench, which is great, like the mayor said, we don't turn down any, any money, so maybe that was good, except that we're looking forward to, you know, our project, when we finish the streets, the sidewalks, and that includes street furniture all the way from here to there, so we thought this would be the opportunity to come forward with a, a plan, you know, a suite of street furniture picked out in advance, so the group people step forward and donate something, and say, okay, here, let's donate this, so it's all white, and it's all good quality furnishings.
Yeah, but the streets, how long is it gonna take to redo the streets?
Quite a while.
So we're gonna have some benches there, some benches here, that's just, that's not just...
Yes.
We need to really work on trying to get it cohesive.
If I could, just a few comments. I've had a meeting with Alice Byers, and Alice was, she had, she, she chairs KKB, and she's, she, she works with leadership, leadership Kingsville and the Chamber of Commerce, and so she and I have worked together to try to map out a plan, and Alice told me that, you know, her membership would prefer to focus on Main Street, and I was, what's the mission for KKB? Are they gonna be about planting trees, or what, what are they, what are they about? And so, and I wanted to know what they were gonna be about, because the city's also pursuing those same things, we wanna beautify downtown, we wanna do some of the same things they wanna do. So she and I got together and agreed, more or less, that, that we would focus on benches and trash cans and ultimately recycling containers. And we wanted a consistent look. Now, so we had a choice, we wanna wait for the three or four or five years, or however long it's gonna be, until we get downtown, the street, the streetscape done, we're doing the engineering now, but do we wanna wait until after the, the new streets are in before we put in new benches? I told her I would like to proceed now, because as long as we put the benches in a place where they can be easily removed and, and put back once the street repair is done, and we're striving for a consistent look, we've, we've looked at all kinds of different designs, and I think we have a consistent look, the, the wood-slatted benches will probably ultimately disappear, and we'll probably, we're, we're trying to conform to the benches that are now being proposed.
Why aren't we just getting, moving the wooden-slatted benches somewhere else and replacing them too?
We can, we can do that, we can do that.
And I'm sure there's places we could put them in.
Sure.
Urban, landscape. The other thing was, at the KKB meeting, you had, you showed a picture of the double garbage can, it was recycling on one side and trash on the other?
Yes.
That looked quite nice, 'cause this one here, you're probably gonna get more trash in both sides, whereas you have separate, you have a good, good chance, and they were very attractive. You have a better chance of getting your recycling and your trash separated, and looked nice.
I was looking forward to having those big delics.
Yeah.
But...
It might be good down at the park, maybe on the city streets.
They're pretty cool, they're in Boston, and they don't worry.
They're, they're on the main, main.
They're on the main track, and they are, lots of...
Every park, no, very little maintenance.
Alice also has people, I think it's the Leadership Kingsville, wanna donate trees, and all they're asking for is a little plaque that would go along to acknowledge the person who donated the money for the tree, so...
They're not gonna provide the plaque themselves.
Uh, I think, I think it's part of...
The tree donation.
Yeah, yeah, part of it, yeah.
All right, that was an introduction item. And...
But you have a...
For twenty-five items. That's all the business we have to see here, right?